Meetings were online. Again, for those of you who don't know, I'm Bruce Thompson. I'm the Chair of the Water Quality Control Commission. I'd like to state that the Commissioners are attending this meeting virtually because of inclement weather made it difficult or impossible for many people to attend in person. We, the Office of the Attorney General, Rick, has advised us that this meeting will comply with Section 10-15-1, parentheses C, of the Open Meetings Act, which outlines requirements for virtual participation. A further complication is that the originally noticed location in the roundhouse, I believe, is closed because there's a two-hour delay. I don't know if that's true, but we do have live stream and it looks like everybody's online. And perhaps we could have had this in person, but yesterday morning when Counsel and Office of the Public Facilitation and I were discussing, the weather forecast was really lousy. So I apologize for having to do it this way, but at the same time, you know, we learned how to do it two or three years ago, and so I hope it goes okay. So with that, I would like our Assistant, Matty Corral, to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Brandcard? Commissioner Brandcard? Okay. Commissioner Candelaria?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dominguez?
Here.
Commissioner Fry?
Here.
Commissioner? Commissioner McWilliams?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Paladugo? Commissioner Paladugo? Thank you, and I apologize if I'm saying your name wrong.
No, no, you're right. I had to unmute myself.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Petten? I believe they let me know he was not going to be in this meeting. So he's not present today. Commissioner Rosato?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Velazquez? Sure, I believe he also is going to be absent. Commissioner Vichio?
Here.
Commissioner Semlin?
Here.
Right Chair Armstrong?
Here.
Chair Thompson?
And I'm here.
Sure, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Excuse me, this is Commissioner Brandcard.
Great.
Thank you.
Good morning, Bill. For your information, we just started, we just did the roll call. So Agenda Item Number Two is the approval of the agenda. There was some discussion about limiting the agenda, but you know, with the exception of Item Six, which is the proposed rules for water reuse, it looks like everything is pretty, pretty short. So I would, we need a motion to approve the agenda, but I would suggest that we go ahead and continue with the full agenda. So at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda, Commissioner Brandcard.
I'll second.
Okay, and again, going back to our experiences during the pandemic, when you make a motion or when you speak, please identify yourself. It'll, it'll help with the notes. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as posted. Matty, could you have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Brandcard?
Yes.
Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Paladugo?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vichio?
Yes.
Commissioner Semlin?
Yes.
Right Chair Armstrong?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next is, we have approval of the minutes for our last meeting, which was in October. I believe that Commissioner Brankard had some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a number of comments on the minutes, some of which have to do with sort of our scheduling of things. So let me go through it first. I think on the list of Commissioners present, Commissioner Patton is not picked. Considering he's voting on a whole bunch of stuff later on, I think he probably was there. Okay. Then on Item Number Eight, which is the discussion of House Bill 142, I believe the Commission, at least it's in my notes, requested that the Attorney General's Office provide us with direction, a memo, something interpreting House Bill 142 and its impact on the Commission rulemaking, in particular, the Commission's case that's on appeal. So that's not reflected in the minutes. I don't know if everyone else agrees with me or what, but that was my recollection habit, notes that we did that. And then on Items Nine and Ten, stay is granted until today. And since we haven't heard from the parties, I assume the stay will be lifted. And so I guess that means that, just for note, that we need to schedule at our next meeting a final decision or a hearing or something on this matter to resolve it. And finally, on Item Fourteen, you know, we do a great job of, in the minutes, of listing everybody's votes, which is generally not required. Ironically, there are two places where listing the votes matters and that didn't occur in this item, and those are when we go into closed session, we come out of closed session, we need to list the votes of the individual members. And also, when you go into closed session, we need to explain what reason we're going into closed session, which would be, in this case, to deliberate on an administrative adjudicatory matter, which is one of the listed exceptions in the Open Meetings Act. And then when we come out of closed session, we have to make a statement that says all we talked about was what we said we were going to talk about. Something like that. So anyway, just to, just to clarify, if we could, those are the little changes that I would request in our minutes for the 10:10 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brankard.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Dominguez.
I'd like additional amendments. Back to the members present at the meeting. In addition to adding Commissioner Patton, I believe we need to add Commissioner Candelaria. If I remember correctly, some of the Commissioners may have been after the initial roll call. So that may be the reason that they're missing. I'm moving to page four under Item Twelve and Thirteen. It indicates that Andrew Knight requested an extension of the stay. But it did not indicate an action taken by the Commission. So I don't know if that's just missing or if the Commission did not take an action to extend the stay. And then reflecting back to Commissioner Brankard's on Item Eight, and we may need to go back to the recording. I do not have in my notes a request of action for our Counsel or the Attorney General's Office, but it could be that I just missed that in my notes. So we may need to back to the recording to clarify that. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I would note regarding your comment on Item Twelve, my notes say that we had, it was an indefinite stay and that we don't need an extension. So I think that the notes are okay. Or the minutes are okay. Regarding Agenda Item Eight, again, my notes do not state that we specifically requested comments from the Attorney General. But again, I might have missed it.
Chair, Chair Thompson, this is just not to chime in here too early, but I do recall Commissioner Brankard making that, and it may not have been a formal request, but I do have notes. My office is working on that, and I plan to put it on the Commission's next agenda for discussion, further discussion and a presentation by myself.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Brankard, it looks like your hand's still up.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Fry?
Fine, I'm following up on what Commissioner Brankard was saying about voting for closed session and so on and so forth. I am finding that there, under Item Fourteen, that we did vote to enter closed session, return from closed session, did a roll call vote, and then the vote on the item. Is that the one you were commenting on, Commissioner Brankard?
Yes, but I believe the Open Meetings Act says the vote of each Commissioner shall be recorded. So we did that for almost every other vote in the minutes, except that one. Interesting.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got some corrections. What I would like to do, Commissioner Brankard made a good point on Item Ten, which was the determination whether a discharge permit is needed for pilot testing at Cannon Air Force Base. I'd like to bring that up under Old Business at the end of this meeting. Would that be appropriate, Commissioner Brankard?
As long as we don't take action, I think that would be.
Yeah. Okay, well, what I would like to do is we can have a further discussion of it. I don't think it's appropriate to discuss it during the discussion of the minutes. Counsel, Bowen.
I noticed an error as well in the minutes, and I know it's not typically my place to make these corrections, but Item Fourteen, the motion passed with a five, well, the motion had a five to four vote, and it says on the minutes that the motion had a six to four vote.
Okay. So we've had a number of corrections to the minutes. Matty, have you made a record of those corrections that need to be fixed?
Mr. Chair Thompson, yes, we'll amend the minutes.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to request a motion to approve the corrected minutes.
This is Commissioner Rosato's motion.
This is Commissioner Fry, I'll second.
Okay, before we vote, Counsel Bowen, your hand is still up. Do you have other comments? Okay.
No, I apologize.
It's okay. Are we ready to vote? Looks like we are. Matty, would you please call the roll to approve the minutes?
Yes, Commissioner Brandcard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez? Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams? Commissioner Paladugo?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vichio?
Yes.
Commissioner Semlin?
Yes.
Right Chair Armstrong?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, Agenda Item Four is approval of the Opens Meetings Act Resolution for 2024. Counsel Bowen?
Thank you, Chair. I did send all of the Commissioners a copy of the proposed OMA Resolution. You might note, this is, this has been shortened from your previous years. That was intentional. All of the required information is still in it. This is a draft that my office has worked on extensively over the past few months in order to streamline and make all of our resolutions consistent across all of our boards. So this is one that we rolled out to all of our clients. If anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Okay. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to look at the Open Meetings Act Resolution. We have to do it every year. I would entertain a motion to adopt the Open Meetings Act Resolution.
And Mr. Chair, before we get to that, I do have a question for Counsel.
Go ahead, please.
First off, I appreciate the concise nature of this Open Meetings Act Resolution. I think over time, through history, we had a shorter version and it became a dissertation at some point in time. So the brevity of it, I think, more useful. With that said, on Page Two, Item Three, out midway, it indicates should be identified annually. So do we need to identify when the meetings held within this resolution? Or is there another spot that it gets identified annually?
And let me just confirm, Page Two, Item Paragraph Three?
Yes, the regular meetings.
Oh, understood. That can be identified on the website. It doesn't need to be identified in the actual OMA Resolution. So as long as the public has access to the knowledge, we've covered our bases.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I need a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chair, Larry Dominguez, I would make a motion to adopt the 2024 Open Meetings Act Resolution.
Thank you.
Second, Commissioner Brandcard?
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, Matty, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Brandcard, how do you vote? Commissioner Brandcard, how do you vote? I'm sorry, I think you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez? Commissioner Fry? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Paladugo?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vichio?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Semlin?
Yes.
Right Chair Armstrong?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Okay, let's go on to Agenda Item Five, which is public comment. Is there any members from the public that would like to make comments on general comments on, on, for the Commission?
I'm sure, Thompson, I do have Jolene that is wishing to make a comment regarding Agenda Number, Item Number Six. I'm not sure if you'll allow it. I also have two members of the public here that I would like to ask if they, if they would like to make a comment.
Yes, I saw the request from Ms. McHaleb. What I would, for the benefit of the other Commissioners, she asked if she could comment on the scheduling of the public hearing for the water reuse regs. And I would be pleased to hear those. I would suggest that we allow her to make her comments during the discussion of Agenda Item Six, if that's okay with everybody else. Anybody object to that? I see a couple of heads nodding in affirmative, so we'll go ahead and allow Ms. McHaleb to address the Commission when we get to Agenda Item Six. So Matty, you said there are two members of the public that would like to, to address the Commission.
Oh, no, I apologize. I wanted to ask them, I just didn't. They don't wish to make public comment.
Okay. All right. If there are no public comments, last chance, then let's go on to Agenda Item Six. This is in the matter of the proposed new rule 20.6.8 NMAC. It is supplemental requirements for water reuse. So I believe Crystal Weatherly with NED is what, I think she's with NED, is going to lead this discussion, is that correct? Ms. Weatherly.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, is this Andrew Knight's matter? Agenda Item Number Six?
Yes, yes, my mistake, my mistake, Mr. Knight.
About now, is that better? Yes. Okay, good morning. My name is Andrew Knight. I'm Assistant General Counsel with the New Mexico Environment Department. And with me today is Mr. John Roderick, our Division Director of our Water Protection Division. And we are here this morning to request that the Commission set a hearing to adopt new Part Eight to our ground and surface water protection regulations. These will be supplemental regulations for water reuse. And this has been a, really a multi-year effort on the part of the department. And we've been, the past few months, we've been engaging with stakeholders and developing the specific rule language. And we bring that to you today and ask that the Commission set a hearing for the month of April of this year and that the Commission appoint a hearing officer for this matter. And Mr. Roderick is here today, and he can speak more specifically to what the rule is and what it does. And he can also, is available to answer questions from the Commission.
Okay, Mr. Roderick?
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here before the Commission today. This specific rulemaking is setting the framework, if you will, for water reuse regulations in general. We are heavily engaged in looking at water reuse of all types, including direct and indirect potable reuse, industrial gray water reuse. We're looking at desalination. Where this particular regulation addresses the first phase associated with treated produced water from oil and gas. And I would stress, as, as Andrew noted, we've been working on this for several years. We engaged about four years ago with New Mexico State University and stood up the New Mexico Produced Water Research Consortium, which includes industry, academia, private individuals, the scientific community, to help us develop regulations. This first phase lays out the specifics and provides guidance for industry and the public with regard to moving forward with pilot projects, bench scale projects, pilot scale projects, demonstration projects, all with the caveat that we do not allow discharge of produced or treated produced water in any manner that could impact groundwater or surface water in the state, specifically because the science has not been completed to determine. specifically because the science has not been completed to determine whether that can be safely done. But we have brought this reg forward to, to provide some regulatory assurance to industry and those that are wanting to move forward, that they can do so, you know, and, and build that framework. We do anticipate that this is the first phase of what my staff hates to hear is a rolling rulemaking, because we have, while we have not developed the, the portions for direct and indirect potable or for desalination, we're engaging with industry, we're engaging with academia, again, the scientific world, and private contractors to build out those sections of the regs with the anticipation that we will be back before this commission in the late fall with additions to this section. But the timing for that is because we want to allow for public outreach and input, the standing up of an, of a advisory committee similar to what we did for the produced water section of this particular rulemaking, to provide that input. Water use is critical, we all understand that in the state, and finding ways to extend the life of our current groundwater supplies is, is, there's no option, we have to do it. And so this is our first step moving forward. We have, you know, our timeline is set with regard to staffing availability and how we look to move forward with this. And the first step, again, works best if we can get a hearing in April to get this piece into place. But with the assurance that you will be seeing us again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight and Mr. Roderick. So the request today is to appoint a hearing officer and set a date for the hearing.
That is correct. Yes, yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Comments, discussion, questions from the commission? My understanding is that this reg has already been published for public notice, is that correct?
Let's see, well, it, yes, yes, there is, there is a, it has been put out for public comment. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, while I, while I'm speaking, due to the publication, public notice requirements under the State Rules Act, any hearing in this matter could not take place before April 15th. So to be more specific, we are asking for a hearing in the, in the latter half of the month of April.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. Again, questions and comments? I would note that the New Mexico Office of Public Facilitation has reached out to Attorney Felicia Orth, and she has agreed to be the hearing officer. So it would be my recommendation that we appoint her and that the commission today approve her appointment and set a date for the public hearing. I also understand from the, the filings that were submitted by NMED that they're anticipating the hearing may take as long as five days, is that correct, Mr. Knight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. We, you know, that out of an abundance of caution, I think, we, we were asking five days. But we are, we are hopeful that we can get it done in less.
Yes. Okay. Questions, comments from the public, or from the commissioner, commissioners? Would now be a good time to hear the comments from Ms. McHaleb? Okay, Ms. McHaleb, if you're on, hello, how are you? Thank you for joining us. And go ahead.
Good morning, can you hear me, Chair? Good morning, can you hear me, Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Chair Thompson and Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I want to let you know, my name is Jolene McHaleb, and I am appearing today on behalf of two clients, the San Juan Water Commission and Select Water Solutions. And I'm appearing on their behalf today for scheduling purposes only with regard to their request that a hearing on the water reuse rules not be scheduled before July of this year. I believe Kristin Deal, who is a Vice President of Select Water Solutions, sent a letter to Chair Thompson outlining her concerns. And the San Juan Water Commission also echoes those concerns. Basically, it's been four years since the adoption of the Produced Water Act and also pertinent amendments to the Water Quality Act. And because of that length of time, we're not clear on why it's important that this hearing take place by April, the end of April. With respect to my two clients, they are concerned that they and perhaps other interested parties can't be sufficiently prepared for a five-day hearing before July. Part of the reason for that is the upcoming 30-day legislative session, which will take up most of their time and their attorney's time. And also the need to find appropriate technical witnesses to prepare technical testimony for the hearing. We agree with the Environment Department that these are important regulations, and we just want to make sure that everyone has sufficient time to prepare for the hearing and to make sure that we give a full presentation to the commission on the regulations. Also, there have been some significant changes since the public comment draft was circulated, and my clients haven't had time yet to fully consider those changes. They're also hoping that if there's sufficient time, they might be able to work with the Environment Department to get all of their concerns addressed, which would help, you know, speed the process of the hearing. And for those reasons, just to make sure that the process is fair and that my clients and others can be fully prepared for the five-day hearing, we would request that it not be scheduled before July. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McHaleb. I, I don't recall seeing anything from, what was the woman's name, Kristin Deal? And I checked my clutter and spam just now, and I didn't see anything. So I would, she should resend it, please.
Yes, sir, I will ask her to resend it. I believe that she emailed it to Pam to be distributed to you, but I will follow up on that.
Okay. All right. Questions and comments from the commission? So we've got a request from NMED to hold it in April and a request from at least one industry representative that we defer it till the summer.
Mr. Chair, I've got my hand up too, so.
Okay, let me hear from the commissioners first. I'll give you an opportunity, Mr. Rose. Ms. McWilliams, Commissioner McWilliams.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I guess I am inclined to listen to comments from, I'm sorry, I forgot your name that just, just went, that represents her clients that would be impacted by this rulemaking. And I'm inclined to listen to that because I would hate to have any argument that there was not sufficient time and waste anybody's time for it to get sent back from any rulemaking that we do and have to redo any kind of hearing. And so I guess I'm inclined to postpone till July. I think you're muted, Chair Thompson.
How long is it going to take us to learn how to do this stuff? Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Chair Thompson.
Mr. Dominguez?
I would like to hear from Mr. Rose to see if he's got additional input prior to additional discussion.
Certainly, certainly, I wanted, I just wanted to hear from the commissioners first. If there are no other comments from the commissioner, Mr. Rose, what have you got to say, please?
Yes, Chairman Thompson, I'm here appearing on behalf of the New Mexico Oil and Gas Association, and they echo the concerns that Ms. McHaleb raised. I'd also point out that, that if you're going to have prefiled written direct and rebuttal testimony, which I assume you will in a, in a rulemaking that's likely to be this complicated and this lengthy, you're looking at having public notice out sometime more than 60 days before the hearing to allow that. And, and prefiled technical testimony, if you held the hearing in April, would be due probably sometime next month, immediately after the legislative session, which is going to be untenable for a lot of the participants. So like I said, we'd echo Ms. McHaleb's concerns and would, would join in her request this not be set any sooner than July of this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Mr. Chairman, may the Department respond?
Yes, please, Mr. Knight.
Thank you. I would like to, first of all, I'd like to say that, you know, first of all, it, it is early January right now, and several of these groups have been involved in this, in the development of this rulemaking for, for years and have had lots of time already to prepare for any eventual rulemaking in this matter. Second of all, the month of July in particular is problematic, but, you know, once, once school gets out, it's, you know, a lot of people are on vacation and it's, it's problematic for the department in that we have several other important matters that are going to require some of the same staff and some of the same resources that we are putting towards this hearing. So I, I feel like, you know, if, if we are going to delay the hearing, I would, I would ask that we not delay it that long. We, we really would have preferred to have this, you know, petition this rule earlier than now, but that's where we are. And if we, if, if the, if it is the commission's will to delay the hearing, I would ask that it be delayed for, you know, perhaps sometime earlier than July, because that is, that is six months away, and I feel like that's too long. I know Mr. Roderick would also like to say a word or two, if, if that's okay with the chair.
Yes, please, Mr. Roderick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commission. I, first off, want to echo what our counsel, Mr. Knight, said. I, I do have to reiterate that the consortium has been around for about four years, has actively tried to engage with industry to assist in developing the science to aid the rulemaking. That has been unfortunate with some limited success. And the other thing that I would say is that, you know, our staffing concerns are such that we have to try and manage the time as well as, as everything else to be able to get these things done. To delay this at all potentially delays the entire reuse portion, which has an adverse effect on the folks here in the state. I would also note that, you know, anyone can come to this commission and petition for a hearing for a rulemaking, doesn't have to be the Environment Department. And there's certainly nothing to preclude the requesters from putting together whatever it is that they're wanting to present, and we're happy to work with them, that's what we've been trying to do all along with the consortium, you know, to, to bring something additional to this commission in July. Like I say, we're on track at this point to come back in the fall, so it's a little quicker than our timeframe. And we're unsure, unfortunately, I, I don't know exactly what, you know, what they're looking at bringing forward, what portion of this they're protesting. But again, this is, this is what I, what we're considering a rolling rulemaking, so we're going to be back. This is going to be an ongoing project, you know, for months to come. So this is not the one and done only opportunity to address issues that they may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Ms. McHaleb's got her hand up. Are there further questions from commissioners? Mr. Branker?
I guess I'll ask a practical question about our availability of our hearing officer and whether she has limits for any of these.
Thank you, Commissioner Brankert, for asking. My limitations are pretty limited in themselves. There are just a few days here and there. The total eclipse of the sun in April, you know, a personal event in late June, around June 23rd. Anyway, I have a few days I want to stay away from. Generally, I'm available.
Thank you, Ms. Orth. Other questions from the commissioners? Ms. McHaleb?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I just want to respond quickly to let you and the commission know that, to my knowledge, neither of my clients have been involved in any way with the Produced Water Consortium and have not been a part of any stakeholder process that the Environment Department might have engaged in. So, so we do not have a four-year history with these proposed rules.
Thank you, Ms. McHaleb. Other questions or comments? I, I see a note in the chat that Amigos Bravo's intends to participate. And she'd like to make a brief comment. Before we do that, it looks like Mr. Armstrong's got his hand up. Commissioner Armstrong?
Thank, thank you, Chair. My, my only question is, maybe an ignorant one. I, you know, my, my career's been in state government. I'm familiar with the burdens on a state agency for a 30-day legislative session, but I'm curious about the references to this morning, to the burdens that interested parties might have from the 30-day legislative session and, and how that would delay their ability to participate.
Okay, so that sounds like a question for Mr. Roderick or Mr. Knight.
No, sorry, Mr. Chair, I think it's the opposite. It's, it's for Ms. McHaleb and Mr. Rose.
I'm sorry, thank you, I, I appreciate it.
May I, Chair Thompson?
Yes, please.
With respect to Select Water Solutions, there are several pieces of legislation, including the New Mexico Oil and Gas Act and perhaps the Water Use Leasing Act, that are expected to be addressed by the legislature. And Ms. Deal, whom I previously referred to, is, is already planning to move to Santa Fe for the entire session. And my firm often provides testimony to committees on these issues. And with respect to the San Juan Water And with respect to the San Juan Water Commission, it also addresses these issues, and it is a political subdivision of the state that plans to be intimately involved in the legislative session. Thanks.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I might to-
Yes, please.
To sort of echo what, what Ms. McHale said. Nogga, obviously, historically, it's been active during the legislative session. In addition to budget items, I'm sure there'll be tax items that, that Nogga and its members will be involved with. And as Ms. McHale mentioned, the governor, from what I gather, intends to, if she hasn't already, indicated that changes to the Oil and Gas Act are going to be part of the 30-day session. So, Nogga and its members will be actively involved. And I think we, we share some of the same concerns that Ms. McHale had about being able to, to hire and retain experts and prepare for the hearing. But, and so the 30-day session, it's not just a diversion. It's all encompassing and sort of engulfs all of the Nogga's staff as well as members. So, like, like state agencies, Nogga is going to be actively involved in this session. And, and I think we're going to have the same kinds of experiences that, that Member Armstrong mentioned for agency staff as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Armstrong, did that address your concerns?
It, it helped me better underst-, thank you, Chair, it helped me better understand the involvement that, that they were alluding to. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from commissioners? We've got a request from Rachel Khan with Amigos Bravo's. Would, would, she'd like to make a brief comment. Does anybody object to that? Hearing none. Ms. Khan, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'll be very brief. We, as I mentioned in my chat, are planning on being parties in this, this hearing process. We have been moving forward with preparing for an April hearing. We would certainly like the hearing to happen before July. You know, maybe a month extra after the session would be helpful, say, May, but we would hope to have the, the hearing before July. Thank you so much for your, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Okay. What's the pleasure of the commission? Would we like to appoint a hearing officer and set a date today? You know, the problem is, we're not going to have a, a meeting in February. So we, i- if we don't take action today, it pushes everything back two months. So my strong preference would be to select a hearing officer, appoint a hearing officer, and select the date for the hearing, if we possibly can. The silence is deafening.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jonas, Commissioner Armstrong. Here in both sides, I think the, the emphasis on making sure everybody can be available to participate is what's on my mind. Mr. Knight's point about summer vacations makes sense to me, and that, that the farther we get towards that, we risk the ability of everybody to participate in a hearing. But also understand what folks have said about the burdens of the legislative session. It seems like late May, mid-May might be meeting in the middle for these two proposals, and that would still, I think, it's been a while since I've been in school. I think that would still get us before school goes out for the summer.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Commissioner McWilliams.
I guess I would caution us not to have the hearing when school is expected to be out, that final weeks of May, those can be really busy weeks and might be difficult to attend for a five-day session.
Some of us have final exams. Commissioner Brankard.
Well, you know, it was five years ago, 2019, when the legislature directed this commission to adopt regulations about treated produced water. You know, I guess a few more months may not matter, but it's clear from the Environment Department that this is the first step of a number of rulemakings. And this rulemaking, by some of our standards, is pretty sparse in its detail. So I don't see any reason to delay this in any great detail. I understand the legislative session. But I guess I would move, just to throw this out, and then we can discuss it, that we have a public hearing to begin on the week of May 13th.
Okay. Yes. All right, Commissioner Dominguez. So it's been moved. I need a second.
This is Commissioner V. Hill, and I would also echo that we appoint Felicia Orth as a hearing officer for that.
Okay, so let me, let me clarify. Are you seconding Mr. Brankard's motion and adding to it that Ms. Orth be the hearing officer?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Let's, let's continue the discussion. Commissioner Dominguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of my, one of my suggestions was, and Commissioner Brankard may have addressed it, is that whenever we do schedule this hearing, that it be scheduled around a regular meeting as to simplify things for the commission. We've understand the need to schedule it at, at, you know, a time that fits for everybody, but we're never going to find that time. But having hearings not around their meeting just complicates stuff for the commissioners where they're having to, again, two weeks of the month, travel to Santa Fe versus traveling months. So I would just caution the commission on that. Second thing is, I do, I do appreciate the concerns of the industry on being able to adequately prepare for it. And I would hate for lack of preparation to wind up being a reason that something gets appealed and pushed further out to accommodate those concerns. So just, just a few comments from, from my perspective. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And, and before we continue this, I, I want to get Mr. Brankard's concurrence that Commissioner V. Hill's suggestion that Ms. Orth be the hearing officer is, he accepts that, that, that modification? Commissioner Brankard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking at the calendar. Our regular hearing date or our meeting date of the commission would be the second Tuesday in May, which would be the 14th. So the Environment Department has suggested five days for the hearing. If we, I don't know if it'd be possible to do it in four days, but that might be an option. If we have our regular commission meeting on the 14th, Tuesday, the 14th, and then begin the public hearing on the reuse regs immediately following the, the meeting, and I think that would address Commissioner Dominguez's concern that we don't want to have too many separate meetings in Santa Fe. Commissioner Frye.
Chair, I'm wondering if we couldn't just go ahead and start on May 13, which is the Monday, knowing that it's going to be a long week anyway. That allows us a full five days in case discussion goes along.
Sure. I, I don't think with, with proper notification, this is a question for Council Bowen. I don't think with proper notification, there's no reason why we couldn't have our regular May meeting on Monday and then start the hearing after that. Is that, is that correct? She's nodding her head.
Yes, Chair Thompson, that's correct.
Okay. Further discussion? Commissioner Dominguez.
Mr. Chair, and not to complicate things, I would point out that I believe May 12th is Mother Day, Mother's Day. So if you're wanting people to travel to Santa Fe on Mother's Day, that might interrupt some family events. That's not to say that you couldn't, we couldn't start things midday on the 13th. But it would suggest we not alienate all the mothers of the state by canceling dinner on Mother's Day.
Okay, thank you. I, I, we could set the date today and then set the time that the meeting begins at a later time, I think. All right, so it's been moved and seconded to begin the hearings on May 13th, and that Felicia Orth would be the hearing officer. And I want to confirm with Ms. Orth that that's not a problem, that week is not a problem for her.
It is not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, clarification. I, I thought we were saying on the 13th would be the regular meeting, and then the hearing would start on the 14th.
My thought would be, we'd, we'd start the hearing right after the regular meeting. I think my, my thoughts are, let's, let's schedule it for the 13th. And then if, if there are a bunch of agenda items that come up that we need to address before that, perhaps we can postpone it a day. Would that work, Ms. Ms. Bowen?
As long as it's noticed, Chair Thompson, which we'll make sure is taken care of, then yes, that would be fine.
Okay. So, let me restate the motion as I understand it. The motion would be that we would schedule our hearing for, to begin on Monday, May 13th, after the conclusion of our regular May meeting, and that Ms. Orth would be the hearing officer. Are we ready to vote? Okay, it looks like we are. Yes, ma'am.
Apologies for interrupting. It, it might be helpful to include in the motion that the hearing will last for as long as is necessary.
Mr. Brankard, is that okay with you, that amendment? And the second, Mr. V. Hill?
This Commissioner V. Hill is fine with me.
Okay. So are we ready to vote? All right, Matty.
Mr. Chair, one more question for you. Are you looking at starting the regular meeting at our regular time of day?
I think we can be flexible on that. I thought, as I said again earlier, I think we can set the time at a later date. We don't need to set the time. We just need to set the date, I think. Is that, is that acceptable to you, Mr. Mr. Commissioner Dominguez?
I, I suppose that works. I'm just trying, for, for scheduling purposes, I just need to know when to block out times.
Okay.
And if I need to travel Sunday, it's good if I know that now.
Okay.
And Chair Thompson?
Yes.
So that means that in March, we need to finalize that schedule? Because we need 60 days for the hearing notice. Is that correct?
Council Bowen?
If you're making a motion to schedule today, then an order will be drafted with the dates, so that it needs to be finalized today.
But not the time, just the date?
Just the date, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, so Matty, would you please call a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Brankard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Williams?
No.
Commissioner Paula Dugle?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosato?
Yes.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Semlin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Armstrong?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, seven, seven yes and two no, so the motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. This is going to be fun. I don't know if any of you sat through the Clean Air hearings last year, December, I think it was. Those were also fun. But I think it's necessary, and I'm, I'm glad that we're going to do it. So with that, let's move on to Agenda Item 7, which is a presentation on, from NMD on the Section 303D, 305B list of assessment of, of the streams and, and waters of the state of New Mexico.
Thank you, Chair Thompson and commissioners. My name is Crystal Weatherly. I'm Assistant General Counsel for the New Mexico Environment Department, and I'm here representing the Surface Water Quality Bureau in this matter. We are not here to provide a presentation today. That was a, an oversight. We are here today to, ultimately to request to be on the March agenda for this matter to provide a presentation at that time. On November 1st, the Surface Water Quality Bureau filed a petition with the commission for the approval of the final draft State of New Mexico Clean Water Act, Section 303D, 305B Integrated List of Assessed Surface Waters, which is also known as just the Integrated List. The Integrated List is Appendix A of the upcoming 2024, 2026 Clean Water Act 303D, 305B Integrated Report. The Integrated Report and related appendices are required under the- The Integrated Report and related appendices are required under the Federal Clean Water Act. Although the November 1st petition requested a hearing on this matter, we are not actually requesting a hearing. That was an oversight on my part. What we are doing is requesting to be on, or we are requesting that the Commission allow the Bureau to provide a presentation on the Integrated List at the Commission's March Public Meeting to allow the Commission and the public to ask any questions about the Integrated List. The public comment draft of the Integrated List was provided on December 4, 2023, for a 45-day public comment period, which ends, I believe, on January 18. Once comments are received and any changes are made to the Integrated List as a result of those comments, the final draft Integrated List will be provided to the Commission for review and approval. In our petition, we note that that list or that final draft will be provided February 9. However, it's my understanding that the Commission has requested that items be provided 10 days prior, so maybe we could get some clarification on when the Commission would like that. Final draft submitted. One last note is that Section 116 of the Clean Water Act requires that states submit the Integrated List to EPA or the Environmental Protection Agency no later than April 1st every other year. And that is why we are requesting to be on the March Agenda so that the Bureau can meet that deadline to submit the list to EPA by April 1st. And I, I did not, I forgot to introduce Shelley Lemon, Surface Water Quality Bureau Chief, and Heidi Henderson, who is the TMDL and Assessment Team Supervisor, and I want to give them a chance to offer any comment or any other information if they would like that I have neglected to provide and otherwise. That is all I have. Shelley or Heidi, do you have anything?
I don't have anything additional to say. Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
I also don't have anything to add. Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you. Thank you. I've been, I've been through this several times now. My recollection is that these approval of these lists, of the Integrated List in particular, is not usually very contentious. Is that, is that true?
That is correct. That's my understanding as well.
So as, as we've discussed previously, we are not going to have a meeting in February, our next meeting, as, as I'm looking at the calendar, I've got this paper, will be March 12. And so we generally request, unless there, you know, unusual circumstances, we'd like to have material submitted to us Friday, a week and a half before the meeting, so the, the submittals would need to be to the Commission, to the Office of Public Facilitation for Distribution by March 1st, which is Friday. So I, I think that's the deadline you will need to work towards is to get everything to us by March 1st. Do we need a resolution to schedule this, or can we just schedule it as a regular, part of the regular meeting?
Chair Thompson, if I may, it can be scheduled as part of, it can just be added to the agenda.
Okay, that's my understanding as well. Okay. Any questions or comments from the Commission?
Mr. Chair, this is Bonnie. I'm wondering, since they were already planning on having that final draft out by February 9, if it couldn't still be accepted at that time? If, if it's, you know, convenient, Ms. Weatherly, I like to have things to review longer than, you know, a week or two.
If I may, thank you, Commissioner Frye and and Chair Thompson, I I believe that the Bureau actually intends to submit it as soon as they receive public comment and are allowed to make any changes that they need to based on the comments they receive. And that may very well be February 9 or as soon as possible. And I would ask Heidi or Shelley to weigh in there if, if they think that February 9 is realistic, or what, what would be, you know, the soonest that, that it could be submitted?
Commissioner Frye and Mr. Chair, our public comment period closes January 24. So at that time, depending on the comments received, we'll evaluate those, and we may make amendments to the final Integrated List. So I believe February 9 is roughly two weeks after that closing date. So that would be potentially pushing it depending on the comments received. If we don't receive complicated comments, then we could make the February 9 deadline. Otherwise, we definitely can submit it before that March 1 deadline once we respond to the public comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Dominguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Weatherly, for just for clarification purposes, help maybe the newer Commissioners as well as the members of the public that are attending. What different words have been thrown around regarding hearing, presentation, et cetera? What are you, what action of the Commission will you actually be asking for in March?
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. The, we will be asking for the Commission's approval of the list prior to submitting to EPA.
Okay, and you earlier said that I'm making this presentation if the Commission has questions or comments, as well as if the members of the public have questions or comments. If some of those result in changes, will you have adequate time to make those changes and then still meet your deadline with EPA?
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I'm going to ask Shelley or Heidi to weigh in on, on that question.
Commissioner Dominguez, Mr. Chair, the public comment draft is currently out for public consumption, so the Commission could review that list. And then we will document the changes that we've made at the March meeting, so you will know what and if anything changed. So that is one way to prep for the March meeting in advance of us providing the final document. We submit the, well, we're required by the Clean Water Act to submit the final Integrated List of assessed waters to EPA by April 1st every other year. So this is, every other year, we go through this process. So we should have time, if we have the March meeting, to submit to EPA by that April 1 deadline. Unless the Commission has significant radical changes to the Integrated List. And for Commissioners who have not been involved in this process before, the Integrated List is our list of assessed surface waters, so we look at the water quality data that we've collected. We look at water quality data provided by third parties, and we assess that against our water quality standards to see if the waters are attaining the standards or not. And we document what those parameters are where, when they are not meeting standards. So just to give you a basic outline, we'll talk more about it in March, but just for general background.
And Ms. Lemon, or rather, Mr. Chair, if I may comment. After my question, I did find the Integrated Report on the web, so I can begin reviewing that ASAP. I'm wondering, is it possible to know what changes, if any, are made after the date that it's the final submitted?
Sure.
Commissioner Frye, yes, we will be discussing that at the March meeting. And in our final, our final draft Integrated List will be posted to the website. We'll provide it to the Commission, and we'll also post it to the website prior to that March Commission meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. And I know that Ms. Henderson has just posted a link to the, to the comment draft. That's in the chat box. Further discussion, further, further comments, questions? Are we ready to move on? Okay, let's go on to Agenda Item number 8, which is a discussion of WQCC 22-55, 22-56, and 22-57, which is the discharge permit requirements for gas plants. So I'm not quite sure who's leading this. Is someone from OCD going to take the lead on this?
Chair, Chair Thompson, if I may?
Please.
I asked for this to be placed on the agenda, and we had discussed this a couple months ago. I realized this is now a couple months old, so just as a refresher, this was regarding a petition for review of potential discharge permits. Let me pull it up. Petition made by Targa Northern. It's appealing the Director's determination that a discharge permit under the WAQA and the WQCC regulations is required for potential discharges from oil and gas facilities. So there were, there were two problems here that I wanted to bring to the Commission's attention and then open up for discussion. The first one, I, I have to apologize for. The WQCC has unique voting requirements, and again, I apologize, this is 100% my mistake. Most of my clients require simply a quorum for voting, whereas WQCC requires at least six people concurring in their voting, and in this case, the vote was only five to four. So it did not pass. That being said, there is an additional issue with this coming before the WQCC based upon my reading and my understanding of the statute, specifically 76 dash, or 74 dash 6 dash 5 oh, which allows for a person who participated in a permitting action and who was adversely affected by such permitting action to file a petition for review before the Commission. The issue here is not a permitting action that can be appealed yet to the, that, yet to the Commission. Therefore, the petitioner did not have standing, and the Commission did not have jurisdiction to consider this petition. To explain that just a little bit further, the issue that petitioner was raising was regarding the potential for a required permitting application. However, no permitting application was actually submitted. And under the statute, a permitting action under subsection in constitutes a denial, a termination, a modification, or a granting of a permit. And since that didn't occur here, then this couldn't be considered by the Commission. So I'd like to open it up for any questions. I realize that was a lot, and I'm, I'm citing a number of statutes. So if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Mr. Rose, I'll get to you in a second. Are there any questions or comments from Commissioners? Okay, hearing on, Mr. Rose, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, one, I've noticed that the Agenda Item is listed as discussion, so I assume under the Open Meetings Act, you're not, you can't take any action with respect to, to this item. So let me preface it on that, and, and I think the question that, that Council raised, I think the Commission dealt with. And, and as I pointed out at the Commission meeting, when it's scheduled, that the hearing on this or the, the argument on this, the Commission's regs provide that authorization for review by the Commission of determinations that a discharge plan permits required, and that the discharge isn't exempt. And so it isn't just the statute, it's the Commission's regulations that provide the process for you to review that. And I don't have it in front of me, but it's, it's 20.6.2, I think it's 3110 or 3111. But, but basically, we're, we're seeking review based on the Commission's regulation. And, and otherwise, in response to Ms. Bowen, if, if this is now reviewable, then our clients would have to wait for an enforcement action to be taken, go through the enforcement action, which would be in front of this Commission in any event. So either way, it gets to you, and, and I think the better way, and, and this Commission has accepted reviews of decisions where permits are required, where this, where we believe, or at least companies have believed that no permits required or that it's exempt. So that's the basis for the Commission's ruling on this. That's the basis on which we sought the Commission to exercise its jurisdiction to review those determinations. And like I said, I mean, that was discussed, I think, early on when the Commission decided to, to schedule the, the argument on this. So I don't know if it's, if it's appropriate to reconsider at this time, if so. And maybe it needs to be more fully briefed, but at least from my position, I think it's, it's right for determination. And I think that the process that we've utilized is appropriate under the Commission's rules. So I can respond to questions if you want, Mr. Chair, but, but that's the basis for what we believe that the Commission's jurisdiction is to hear this.
Questions or comments? So just to clarify, Ms. Bowen, the action that we took at our October meeting, I think it was, has no standing, is that correct? It is, it is not an actual action?
The, the vote itself did not pass. In addition, based on a, a plain review of the rules, both your regulations as well as the statute, the WQCC did not have standing to, or excuse me, the petitioner did not have standing to, to raise this, and WQCC did not have jurisdiction to address it. So it's essentially a moot point, which is why this was noticed as not, not an action item, but essentially a discussion and explanation of the fact that it was, it was a moot determination. I, I will note too that this was not a, a decision that I made, you know, on my own. I ran this by several people in my office. I discussed it with Commissioner Branca, who has quite a bit of knowledge. I discussed it with Commissioner Brankard, who has quite a bit of knowledge. And there seems to be a consensus, and I'll leave it up to Commissioner Brankard if he wants to make a comment on that. What it is here is that providing guidance is not a permitting action. And permitting action by, by your guys' regulations, 20.1.3.714, means those actions that may be appealed to the commission pursuant to 74-6-5. And 74-6-5 does not say anything about providing guidance. It, it only outlines denials, terminations, modifications, or granting of permits.
And Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yes, please.
The appeal's not from the, the guidance. It's from a requirement by OCD that the company submit a discharge permit. So it's more than just guidance. It's a requirement by OCD. And as I alluded, your regulations specifically, 20.6.2.3112B, says that if the secretary determines that a discharge is not exempt from obtaining a discharge permit, then the discharger may appeal such determination by filing with the commission a notice of appeal to the commission when 30 days after receiving the secretary's written determination. And the appeal therefrom, and any action that the commission thereon, shall be in accordance with the provisions of sections in its 74, 6, 5, OPQR, and S. And so our, our petition for review is pursuant to that regulatory provision and pursuant to the direction from OCD requiring the submittal of a discharge permit. It's not merely just guidance. It's actually a final determination that, that a discharge permit's required for these facilities. And, and it also point out that, you know, this matter was remanded back to OCD pursuant to the commission's review. OCD then, then reaffirmed its decision that a permit was required for these facilities. And that's what we're seeking to have this commission review as to whether or not, in fact, a permit's required.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dominguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to delve into the standing issue, but regarding the vote in October, and although we've already adjusted the meeting minutes, I ran back just now and counting the votes listed in the minutes, it is a six to four vote. Am I missing something on that, counsel?
I went back and reviewed the audio recording, and, and that's an error. It, there were only five, it was only five to four.
So the minutes need to be adjusted, not just on the vote, but who voted in the affirmative? Is that correct?
That is correct. And I'm not, I believe it was Commissioner Bee Hill who was incorrectly noted as, as voting in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Regarding, a question regarding the standing issue. So if I'm understanding correct, for the parties to actually petition for review, OCD will have to issue permits, and then the same parties will petition the commission again. And we go through the entire thing, because their point's going to be that there should be no permit. Oh, I'm it seems like a lot of hoops to jump through. To get, to issue a permit, and then it's not the content of the permit that they potentially could be protesting. It's going to be whether there's, should be a permit or not. Is that a logical thought there?
So the issue is, is that an application for a permit was never submitted. The, there hasn't been an action taken by the petitioner that, that could be appealed yet. And I understand it seems, seems like, well, we could just skip this step, and it would be more efficient. But that's not, that's not what the statute says in regards to appealing a, a decision based under 74-6-5. So the petitioner needs
Chair, I mean, the issue was discussed in some detail before the matter was remanded back to OCD. So this would be a complete departure from the action the commission took initially in, in accepting the appeal. Basically, it's a question of whether the commission has jurisdiction over the request. It's not just standing, it's a jurisdictional question. Well, I assume the commission could raise its authority at any time. Like I said, I, we, we were arguing, or at least our petition is based on the commission's rule. And so I think the, the argument that, that counsel's making would, at least the way I read it, would say that the commission's own rule is ultra virus and, and therefore is not, not in accordance with the statute. And as we pointed out, the statute exempts matters that are, that are subject to the authority of the All Conservation Commission from jurisdiction of the commission. So this commission. So it is a question of whether or not the action is exempt. That's before this commission, and we believe it's squarely within the authorization specified by your regulation. And, and the regulations have been that way since virtually the beginning of this program, which is now what, 46 years old. So, you know, and I think the commission has entertained challenges. The determination, the final action is that a discharge permit's required, which is, if you look at your regs under 3106, you have to submit a notice of intent, which wasn't done. Then you have a determination of whether or not a permit's required. The commission allowed for that to be reviewed by this commission, which is all we're asking you to do in this context. So we believe there is jurisdiction to consider the challenges. And, you know, as I pointed out, basically, the companies would then have a choice of, if it's not entertained, either deciding not to submit a permit, requiring OCD to issue an enforcement action, and then appearing before this commission as a defendant in a, in a perm, in a dis, enforcement action, potentially seeking penalties for non-compliance. You know, it seems like it's a better approach to deal with this before you're subjecting the companies to jeopardy. Because the companies don't believe a permit's required, so they wouldn't submit a permit application to begin with. So like I said, I think the, the commission's regulations address the issue, and that our petition is squarely within the context of the commission's regulations as you drafted them.
Commissioner Brankard, it looks like you're interested in making some comments.
I have to. Has outlined in the issue here, which is added a regulation that creates additional appeal authority. The question, I guess, that, that the AG's office may be addressing is always beyond the statute and therefore is not the commission's jurisdiction to do so. So, I mean, Mr. Rose, that they're really the simplest way to get this case in front of the commission is for his clients to just say, no, we're not going to submit a discharge permit application. And then for the OCD, an enforcement action, if they want. They thought this. Or, but they could start an enforcement action, which would get it back before the commission. I, I've to Rose has kind of phrased the issue fairly well. As to the vote issue, boy, you know, I hope somebody clarifies that in the minutes, because I agree with Mr. Dominguez that there are six I-votes, which now, so one of those disappear for it to be five to four.
Okay. So how do we proceed? It seems like we've got two interpretations of the jurisdiction of the Water Quality Control Commission. On the one hand, we can't proceed until a, a, a permit has actually been issued. And the second is that we, we do have jurisdiction because the OCD issued a requirement, not guidance. Thoughts from the commissioners? It seems to me like this is really a, a question for the attorneys to sort out. I don't know. I don't know that, certainly I'm not qualified to make that type of interpretation. So what's the pleasure of the commission? Want to just defer it for a month, two months? Help me out here.
And Chair Thompson, if I may.
Please.
I am happy to submit a, a written explanation of the presentation today for the commission to review prior to the next meeting. I presume that counsel Rose would, would want to do something similar. And then just as a last kind of note here, one of the reasons and one of the purposes behind this, the section 74-6-5 requiring some sort of action to have been taken, either the denial of a permitting action or a, or an enforcement action, is to create a record that can be reviewed. And in this case, that's lacking. And that is similar to reasons why the Court of Appeals has noted that there's, there's a lack of standing in, in certain cases when there's no record established as to what the issue is. So just something to keep in mind. But again, I'm happy to submit something in writing for the commissioners, because I understand it can be hard to sort through these with all the numbers flying around and all the definitions.
And I point out, Mr. Chair, that not just the company's petitioners, but if you're going to allow for, for comments before the next meeting, you also ought to allow OCD to comment as well. Of course. They haven't, and I don't remember, wasn't sure if Jesse was on, on the call yet. But, yeah, I'm not sure what their position is. They certainly didn't move to dismiss the appeal either. So as, as I pointed out, and Mr. Brankard reiterated, basically, what, what you would be doing is, is voiding a provision of your regulations. And so I don't know what, how you do that or what the action needs to look like procedurally. But I guess we'll have to rely on the AG's office to give you appropriate advice as to how to proceed. But certainly, you know, however you want to deal with it, we'd like the opportunity to comment before you make a final decision.
Of course. Any commissioner?
Chair.
Please, Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes, regarding something in writing from counsel, I think that would be useful for the commission to have, have it laid out so that we do have it, something in writing creates a little bit more of a record. And part of my rationale for that is, if I remember correctly, when these were first brought before the commission and the commission was trying to figure out a path forward, the path forward was partially based on guidance from our counsel at that time. So we're getting a little bit of dueling banjos here. So placing something on the record would, would be useful.
One additional, one additional thing to point out, there is a record in front of the commission that was developed by OCD on the remand. So there, there is both facts, submittals, as well as an OCD determination that you're being asked to review. So there actually is a record upon which OCD made its determination, and you're being asked to review.
Okay. I'm not quite sure where we go from here. Personally, I, I think a, a brief from the Attorney General's Office explaining their position, a brief from OCD and a brief from Mr. Rose, the, the petitioners, I think that would be very helpful. It may just restate some of the stuff that's already in the, in these submittals. But having it all in one place would make it easier for the commissioners to understand the, the arguments and the positions. Does that seem reasonable to everybody? Hearing no objections. I see a couple of heads nodding. So let's, let's proceed with that. We will ask the Attorney General's Office, OCD, and the petitioners to submit briefs explaining the positions regarding standing. And, and let's just limit it. If, if we can, let's limit it to that, keep, keep it simple. And we'll hear that at the March meeting.
And Mr. Chair, if you want to set a deadline for submittals, that would be fine, too.
Well, the normal deadline would be, again, Friday, a week and a half before the meeting. So that would be March 1st.
That would be fine.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Okay. Next item on the agenda is our next meeting and whether there are upcoming commission matters. So the next scheduled meeting would be March 12th. And again, we're asking that unless there's, you know, unusual circumstances, we ask that all the material be submitted by March 1st so that Office of Public Facilitation has an opportunity to compile it and send it to the commissioners. Matty or Pam, do you know of any other issues that would be discussed at the March meeting besides the, the Targa OCD petitions?
I'm sure Thompson, I'm not aware of any, but I'll double check with Pam tomorrow, and we're happy to let you know.
Okay. Oh, well, yes, we'll also have the 303D, 305B presentation. So yes, yeah, that'll be, that'll be a good meeting. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Do you want to address the Air Force Base matter where we are?
I'm sorry, what, what issue?
The Cannon Air Force Base appeal.
Ah, yes. Yeah. Thank you for Thank you for reminding me. That was the agenda item ten on our last meeting, the October meeting, in which we granted a stay that extended until today. So since it wasn't on our agenda, my understanding is we cannot take action on that. We can't extend that stay. So Mr. Brankard, would it be okay to just consider it at the March meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's up to the parties something to us. If they want to extend this day or they want to have a, a hearing, you know, they need to know. Otherwise, you know, I think we're ready to make a decision on that matter.
Okay. Well, we can't make a decision today. So we'll make sure that's on the, the March meeting. Okay?
Mr. Chair, on that subject matter, not to complicate it anymore, but when I was trying to weed through that, I, I ran into the same thing Commissioner Brankard had noted that that there was a extension on the stay till today, but looking at the docket, there is not an order actually indicating the action that was taken in October. That may just be that it's not posted to the docket, but there's not a, a signed order indicating that things were pushed out to January ninth. So we may want to just clarify that. Either way, the stay has expired. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take that up in March. Anything else? All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so moved, Commissioner Dominguez.
Seconded by Commissioner Rosales.
Okay, so we are adjourned and we will see you in March and I hope we're in person. So thank you all for, for participating and have a nice, warm winter. Goodbye.